I will go ahead and start. May 24, 2021, GBOS special meeting to complete May 17 meeting. Agenda draft, 7:00 PM. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. Call to order at 7:02 PM. We'll do roll call and disclosures. Mike, why don't you go first?
Okay, Mike Edgington, co-chair and land use supervisor.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard and Public Safety liaison.
Amanda?
Amanda Sassy Rose Supervisor.
Okay. Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor and Temporary Fire Department.
I have, I have one thing. It's very tangential, but I'll disclose it anyway. I think item number two, update on new banner display at Lions Club Park. That's a Rotary project and my spouse is, which I'm not sure she was briefly president, acting president. She's, I think, vice president of Rotary, Girdwood.
Okay, I don't think that will be a problem. If anyone else thinks so, you can say so. Okay. Let's agenda revisions and approval. I'd entertain a motion to approve the May 24, 2021 regular meeting agenda.
We've to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Okay. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called on to talk. Is there anyone here from the public making a comment? I don't see any hands. Kyle, did you have something? Before I started talking?
No, I didn't. I was just, nope.
Okay. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Jobs, seasonal trail crew parks caretaker. One Girdwood vacancy, range 06L71. Also, June 15, 2021, at 5:30 PM, Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities will hold a virtual open house regarding Stewart Highway mile post 105 through 109.5. Windy Corner to Rainbow Point project. Visit project website for more information. WWW.WindyCorner.info. Okay, old business. Number one, Girdwood Trails Committee requests for Girdwood Trail easement program funding. And Kyle, take it away when you're ready.
What, we're gonna be tabling this for now because we don't have a proposal yet. But just the update on where this is at, the Girdwood Trails Committee at their last meeting decided they wanted to do an easement on the Stumpy's Winter Creek, Winter Trail, which is primarily most of the main groomed area out through the meadows, going up towards the cat track in that area. And so what we're gonna work on over the summer is getting a bid together, excuse me, quote together. And then we'll present that to GBOS to see if you wanted to approve funding out of our capital budget to get that done. And so it's on my work list. We wouldn't do the work until next winter. So this is pretty far advanced planning at this point. But if we can get everything set up, then it will work. We won't wait till the ground's frozen and really when it's more accessible out there and not damaging the meadows. So, so at this point in time, we will pen this until we get all the information we need to present it to you at a meeting.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Let's see. Mike?
I have, I have a question, Kyle. I know one of the, one of the issues that's come up is the, is the sort of degree of resolution that, or accuracy, I should say, that HLB require for every trail easement, even when there's no sort of neighboring private land and no neighboring other types of development. Is that? Is that something we would be able to negotiate with HLB, do you feel? Or is that something they're going to stick to? And I was wondering if, if it was parkland rather than managed by HLB, whether the same restrictions would apply? Because that, you know, it's significantly more expensive process if, if you're having to do sort of centimeter accurate surveying.
Correct. And it's been also really a issue of the municipal surveyor in their accuracy of what they want and what they want to produce. We do have a little bit more flexibility than we had on, you know, for example, our last easement that we did was Beaver Pond. And that was very expensive. Beaver Pond, California and Aves, those were all very expensive because of the accuracy that you talked about. And, and working with our term contractors on those requirements made it more expensive too. So it is something that we're trying to work through. I need to get a real sense as we do this. And that's why I'm working with the municipal surveyor is to see the, there's certain requirements they have and then understand those expenses more in this modern day and what the quote would look like. So we're hoping that there will be some flexibility. You know, we've tried to actually just say, hey, can we do with handheld GPSs? And, you know, we did several and can we overlay them and, and try to find the medium in there? Save us a lot of money on these type of things. But when it comes to survey world, they, they want more than that. You know, GPSs aren't fully accurate. And so, so yeah, we're trying to find that balance to, to get these done. So, so hopefully through this process, I will become more educated and knowledgeable about this. And then, you know, working with HLB going forward will be interesting as well because we'll have a complete change in leadership there. And we'll see what they are thinking going forward, so.
Yeah, I guess my specific question was whether the parks, if it was parkland rather than HLB land, whether they'd be the same, it'd be the same criteria. It sounds like it probably would.
Maybe, it may be just for the sense of, the true aspect about this easement is for protection. And, you know, parkland for the most part will be protected. You know, if we were preserving a trail within the park because of historical reasons or things like that, we may have a little bit more flexibility. But we know that land probably won't be developed, will not be because it's dedicated parkland. So, so the accuracy or the detail may be less, but it really is the sort of the whim of the, it's really the decision of, not the whim, but the decision of the municipal surveyor as the standard that they want when surveys are done.
Okay, thanks.
So Kyle, the next time we see this will be months away?
It may be two months at this point as we work out details. So we might be holding off till July.
Okay. All right. Number two for old business, update on new banner display at Lions Club Park.
So the update on that is the most recent is that I met with Kaylee and Larry Daniels and we met on site and talked about the, the design of this. You know, the last action by GBOS to us to approve the structural design that was required since we're building this on municipal land. And so we met with, and the two tasks I had to move forward was, was to get a commitment from Rotary, which is leading this charge, that it will get built if we pay for the design work. You know, GBOS wanted the commitment that, that Rotary would make sure to follow through and have it built. We're just not gonna be sitting here holding a set of plans in the end. And then the other aspect about it was that they were going, Rotary was going to work with Lions Club to get Lions Club support behind this. This banner display would be on Lions Club Park. You know, they're the stewards of that park and they sponsor that park. And so we want to make sure that they're behind it if this was to be built there. And I think Rotary was looking for them to maybe partner with them financially to help, help build it along with other partners here in the community. So I think Lions Club is still work, or Rotary is still working through that. And we, and I'm still waiting to hear in writing that, that Lions Club is supportive of this project. So at this point in time, that's, that's where we're at. And so once we hear more about those things, then we'll start pushing forward on the design work.
Okay, any questions from the board? From the public? All right, thank you, Kyle. And that one, you and Margaret will just put it back on under old business. Ready?
It's ready, yep.
Number three, update for new GBOS members and set work session for review of GBOS nonprofit recreation grants. Updated application and materials.
I'll speak to this, but I'll be honest, Margaret's been carrying the ball on this and she's on vacation this week. And so to give the new GBOS members idea, we've been working through, I'm gonna display it here. We've been working through updating the Girdwood Parks and Rec and the GBOS nonprofit grant applications. It's been quite a while since we've done this and Margaret's been steadily working through this. We've had one work session on this. And we wanted to brief the new members on the, the things that we've been working on to make those changes within the meeting packet. And this is, if you go online, the meeting packet is still from May 17th. We're working out that packet since we're working on business still from that meeting. And you'll find the changes that are being proposed for it. And one of them is the date changes. And, and so now we've pushed back the grant application process a bit. And, and there's been some changes within the application and the review process for that. And so I think what Margaret would like to do, and I'm gonna leave it to her when she gets back. She'll probably send out a, a poll for you to find a work session, probably within the first part of June to go over this and hopefully wrap up these changes. And then, and then vote at the June meeting to approve the changes. And, and then that way she can move forward and get that, all the application material ready for the next budget cycle that will start this summer. So, so yeah, I don't wanna speak too much because Margaret is the, is the, is the probably the, the expert, the expert on this at this point.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, my recollection is we, we did pass, we did vote on moving the dates back. So that, that change was made, but the rest of it is what we're discussing.
Correct. So yep, the dates are set. Now we just need to make sure to get the rest of the packet complete so we can have that out ready for public.
Do you have a center time scale of when we have to have it out? I know Margaret did say this before, but I honestly don't remember.
She did. And let me see if this letter here, sorry, let's scroll here real quick. She sent it to me too. Yeah, so deadline for these will be now September 17th, which before it was June 18th. And then we usually try to have it out, I think, for 30 days in advance. This may not say up here, but we usually have it out for 30.
Okay, so we probably have to have it, we'll have to have a vote on the details no later than the July meeting.
Correct. So we actually have it starting August 2nd. So yeah, we'll have to have it no later than the July meeting because the packets will need to be ready and advertised for July, August 2nd.
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Kyle, too. Any questions from Jennifer or Amanda about the grant announcement and all the editing? My only suggestion to you is that to read through it and read all the side comments because Margaret's been working on it for months. And we've had a few meetings where we get closer and closer to finishing it. So it'd be great to have that special meeting and help, help Margaret and Kyle have it ready to go for the incoming grant cycle. Anything else on that topic?
Not for me.
Okay. I don't see any hands up. So I'll go to number four. Discuss GBOS resolution on domestic violence and support services in Girdwood. So we had our presentation at the beginning of Monday's meeting on the 17th. And then Corinne sent all the attachments that one of them she had, which I think she was meaning to have kind of presented or what she was reading off of. But in the resolution in the packet here, we have a little bit of language I think maybe could improve the, the resolution. Mike, would you like to speak to that next?
Yeah, I think the, what we were talking about is potentially changing the, the action for thereas. Therefore.
Therefore, at the very.
Just trying to find the language I suggested.
I just pulled it up.
I have found it. I'd have to copy paste it somewhere.
Yeah, I think this is the original one published in the packet, but we made some suggested changes. I'm just looking.
Yeah. So we would put.
I have, I think Kyle, Margaret said she put it in the ad.
Oh, okay.
Packet, if that's something you can display.
Yeah, let me see if I can find it.
Jennifer, or go ahead?
I just have a question about this. And I've, I've been watching this move its way through. I remember it from the other meetings. But this, this last bit about the funding, that's hypothetical. That does not, that's not an actual request for an actual set number of funds at this point? Or is there an understanding that somehow or another that involves a certain amount?
Great question. So I think that at this discussion, we would like to perhaps make a number amount in this. Or if not, we say where it's coming from. And I didn't know if that would be coming from more research with AWAKE or potentially how many trips to town for.
So what we had in the, what we hadn't suggested updated language, this is, this looks like the one. So it was more of a seek funding rather than making any commitment to specific funding. So it's a statement of intent rather than a commitment to spending specific amounts of money. But that would be something that could follow from this. Where we would not be voting on any specific financial commitment.
Okay. Jennifer?
So.
Jennifer, is your hand up for new?
No, yes, actually. So would it be an accurate summation as, as I'm looking at this? This is basically saying that we are making this a value of GBOS. But other than that, we don't have an actual, I don't see an action item per se. Am I understanding that correctly?
What's closest to action is that we would provide education, increased awareness, publicize safe spaces, et cetera. So what we're looking, what we're basically saying is we're, we are, it's step one. So we're committing to doing things that will aid the situation, like creating space, safe spaces. But we don't have a specific proposal in front of us or a specific funding request in front of us. But yeah, it's, it's a, it's a statement of intent.
Thank you.
Okay. And Kyle, while you're there, could you please blow it up a little bit? And I, I have it on my screen, but for everyone else. Amanda, go ahead.
I was, I just was wondering, who is gonna actually do this? It says the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Are we gonna form some sort of subcommittee to do this work?
Mike, do you have it? Thanks, Kyle. It looks better.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
There wasn't intent, I don't think, I mean, we could do. It depends what the body wishes. But I don't think that was, that definitely wasn't my thinking, that we'd promote this through, you know, where it's appropriate, public safety can, can promote specific things. And where we see the opportunities. For example, I've had some discussions with the, the fire chief, who has several ideas of relatively low cost things that could be helpful. So we'll explore those. And when we come up with specific proposals, we'd bring them to the board. I don't see this as needing a, a subcommittee. Although if the body wishes, we could do so.
Okay. Well. Do we have? A motion to approve this resolution with the new, which is the language in front of us, including the therefor's tonight?
Why don't I, I can read it into the record as a, as a motion.
Okay.
So. Move to following resolution, Resolution 2021-11 of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Resolution of Support Regarding Domestic Violence and Abuse. Whereas the community of Girdwood has been experiencing increased inquiries and concerns of the occurrence of domestic violence and abuse through the Whittier Police Department, Girdwood Public Safety Committee, Advisory Committee and GBOS. And whereas the resources for domestic violence are challenging for victims in Girdwood to access, especially throughout the last year of isolation during the pandemic. And whereas the Girdwood Chapel has experienced a significant increase in food pantry drive-through only recipients, demonstrating the escalating need, the escalating need of the church, community and nourishment throughout the winter months of 2020 and 2021. And whereas the Girdwood Clinic, Girdwood School, Girdwood Chapel and Girdwood Fire Department are the most visible resources in our community for outreach and support of domestic violence victims. And whereas domestic violence includes all forms of physical, emotional, psychological, sexual, verbal, spiritual and financial abuse, including what is often a pattern of battering threats, intimidation, isolation, economic coercion, used by one person to exert power and/or control over another person in the context of intimate dating, family or household relationships. And whereas domestic violence is not a singular crime, but can encompass any criminal activity, including property crimes, financial crimes, drug crimes, traffic crimes and personal crimes. And whereas the epidemic of domestic violence is founded in all types of communities and family structures on severely impacted young and old women, children and men, who often suffer in silence and feel misplaced shame and stigma because of their abusive choices. And whereas Girdwood is isolated from resources available to Anchorage residents, so victims are often limited to primary responders, thus presenting additional challenges in accessing help and support. And whereas domestic violence is present in our community and is never acceptable, appropriate or defensible, and will not be tolerated or defined or defended. And whereas communities in which crimes occur, the best jurisdiction is to investigate and prosecute those crimes, regardless of who it involves. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby resolves to provide outreach, education and increased awareness of victims' rights, create and publicize safe spaces and contacts for support systems, and to assist this effort through the seeking of grants and other financial support to services for those experiencing domestic violence, passed and approved, et cetera.
Thank you, Mike. Kyle, do we need to do a roll call?
Yes.
Probably need a second.
Yeah, if you do need a sec.
Okay. This is Brianna, I'll second that resolution.
Actually, do you want to discuss?
Any discussion from the public? Okay, I don't see any hands. Ready for a roll call then?
Okay. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Senator Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mike, for reading that into the record as well. And we'll look forward to coming up with specific proposals from GBOS in the coming months. Number five, discuss update to GBOS rules and procedures to allow online public meetings to continue after emergency orders expire. If that is how I read number five. I think we need to start where we left off.
Yeah, I can start speaking to this. So this got very complex very quickly. It turns out that although many of the consequences of the emergency orders, things like the mask mandate and gathering limits have been rescinded, the emergency orders themselves are still in place. So under our current rules and procedures, while there's an emergency order in place, we can hold remote meetings. However, once that emergency order finishes, we immediately stop holding remote meetings. And we don't have a mechanism to restart. What we discussed last time was putting in place a, a change in our rules so that when, or before an emergency, before the emergency declaration is terminated, we can extend our online public meetings by up to 35 days. And that would give us a, an opportunity to sort of decide what we're going to do over the next couple of months. Unfortunately, to change our rules, we need to provide 28 days public notice. And under our current rules, we can only vote on those changes at a regular meeting. And by the time you put all these constraints in place, there's not actually a way of getting those rules changed before the emergency order runs out. So we're gonna put in a mechanism, in our current process, we're gonna put in a mechanism in place that we can't use. So, you know, we may, by the time we actually get to vote on that, we'll already be having in-person meetings. And we won't have a mechanism to go back to online meetings. So that's kind of the situation we're in at the moment. And I think it's, that doesn't really match the, the sort of sense we're getting from the community based on the survey. But that's probably a good segue into talking about the survey. Would you like to take that, Kyle, maybe?
Sure. Let me scroll down here. Oops, missing that. Let me pull it up. Sorry. So we did the survey and we closed the survey the afternoon of a week ago, right before the GBOS meeting. And, and. And so we had a pretty good turnout. I think we had just over 100 people. You know, we just ran it over the weekend and, and saw some good feedback. So let me open it up for you here. So from the survey, we found that most of the people actually who are attending meetings are attending land use, which, which isn't uncommon because a lot of times the people, if they do attend any public meetings, they may be turning out the land use to help something that they're interested in for that one person, one vote scenario. And so what we saw overwhelmingly was that people would like to stay online. You know, and one of the options was online via Teams or something similar. And you can see there just close to 42% voted for that. Another 25% voted for a hybrid with limited, limited interaction, which would mean something like people could watch it via YouTube live, but they probably couldn't interact in the meeting, like be called on, things along those lines. We could probably still use a Teams format too. And then just basically they could watch the meeting and listen to it. Which is kind of, we almost do a hybrid that way in that aspect through the radio. We just don't have video and we have audio. And then 25% wanted to return to in-person. And then there was a smattering of different responses. We allowed for people to write different ideas. And, and, and some of them were GTC and LUC in-person and GBOS online. Some of them was when all boards and commissions return, GBOS should, or our committee should return, things like that. And then some people had some complaints that they've entered technical difficulties when they're trying to use these online formats, which is understandable. You know, that people have struggled with that. And so, yeah. And so, you know, the idea was online, online Zoom with a quarter in-person allowed in the meeting room at that aspect. So, so. You know, we asked, at what, at what point would people be comfortable returning to in-person meetings? And for the most part, you know, 32% said immediately, they felt comfortable returning. Another 32% said never, they prefer to meet virtually. And, you know, 19. And, you know, 19 or 20% thought the fall might be good. And then 12% just thought that the, when we're 70% vaccinated as a community. And that may be just off the gauges for Anchorage if Anchorage became 70% vaccinated. And then we just asked some questions about what safety measures that were important to people. You know, temporary, temporary checks, they, they don't, L screenings, that didn't seem very important to people. Probably the most was that masks are available and encouraged. But they weren't even, there wasn't sort of a majority that thought masks were required. So, you know, I think that might have been a result of the CDC recommendations that came out for vaccinated people in that aspect. So, and then there was a smattering of, well, 57 responses of people with different ideas. And, and, you know, from people feel safe and have zero concerns to spacing out the chairs, opening the windows and require vaccinations for people to attend in person. And then, you know, many different things like a sanitation station and, and all those things. So so very good, you know, concerns and ideas brought up there. But they're from both sides. We saw, you know, people didn't have any concerns, no masks, to people said they want to stay on, stay home and, and things like that. It, it was a thing here, it said, make it so that cold air from the ceiling doesn't blow on people sitting in the chairs. We have fixed that problem. During this whole COVID aspect, we have learned how to turn the air handler off. We have a switch now that we can turn it off. So the room actually be more quiet, much more quieter than it has been in the past, especially for those with hearing aids, that won't affect them as much. That white noise is really bad for our older folks to hear. And so hopefully that will resolve that. And then any other feedback regarding your expectation of GBOS and subcommittees in order to meet in-person? You know, first one we got was make decisions based on science. We should move quickly towards hybrid meeting in the future to keep a larger public, you know, partaking and engagement and you know, a smattering of other comments related to that. You know, a lot of people saying online's easier for them to attend and they, you know, there was a lot of people saying that they've seen more people involved in that. So and others felt it's, it's too difficult being online and it's not as real as being in person. And it's harder for people to comment when they're online because it's kind of an intimidating platform, whereas raising your hand was easier in that aspect. So. And I think some comments we also gotten is that some people feel the meetings are longer in the online format because, maybe because of our voting procedures that we have difficulties with. And then also people at times maybe talk longer online in that aspect. So. So yeah, that was kind of the different things got there. And here's the age groups. Primarily people in their 45, 45 to 54 age range, followed by people in the 35 to 44. And then 55 to 64 and then 65 plus, we hit 10 of those and and then 18 to 34 was our lowest number there. So, so yeah, that was kind of what we got.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike, would you like to, I thought your hand was up, maybe it was back down.
It was up, it was, I was actually playing around with something that we don't have. So a couple of things. I think the, there were definitely several comments about the problems of online, the problems people had in in-person meetings in the past. A lot of those were to do with noise and the acoustics in the community room, which were terrible. If the, the air handler was a big part of that, so if that's been fixed, we're probably going to be in a better space, excuse the pun. The, the other thing, the other thing I hear all the time is how many people like online. They like the fact they can pay attention to parts of the meeting or all of the meeting, they can, they can, you know, eat and prepare dinner while they're, while they're at the meeting and things like that, which is, you know, one level is good for engagement and at the other level, it means a lot of people are doing stuff and not paying attention. So, you know, for some meetings like land use where everyone has a vote, that isn't necessarily a hundred percent positive. I think it's different when it's GBOS. And I think the, the sense I get is that if we could find a way of doing hybrid meetings, that would be the, that's kind of the Goldilocks spot of people would be happy if they can still be engaged in meetings, but not have to physically turn up. There are some people who want to be there physically. And I do not have an easy solution for how we do that. And what if we, if we did hybrid, we'd definitely have to move to something with better AV equipment. And I don't know if we could do that for every meeting. We could definitely do, we could probably do that for GBOS. We may be able to do it for land use and trails, but I think all the other subcommittees and the smaller meetings, it would just be overkill. So that's kind of where I am. The only other thing I was going to mention very briefly is Teams does have the capability to have, to provide other reactions like yes and no. So we could, if it's configured the right way and if the Muni, Muni can let, will let us set up teams so that you can do voting online and then only people who, for LUC, for example, and only people who don't vote by responding yes or no would be called upon and that would make the process much quicker.
Thank you. Next hand up was Amanda. Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. I also have heard from people with families who really appreciate the opportunity to participate in the online forum because kids are going to bed about the time that we're having our meetings. So that's another good opportunity.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull this up online or Kyle, maybe you could scroll. Is it the first, the answer to the first one? No, that was which ones? Because I wasn't, I'm not, Mike, I'm not convinced that people all want hybrid. I see, I saw that 40%. Or, and then, I'm sorry, could you scroll down again?
You might be this one, that's number two.
Yeah, maybe that is the one I'm already looking at. Sorry, I was trying to pull it up online on my, my computer's being slow.
Sorry, I had it down in the, there's, there's, there's two levels, there's all the responses. So these, these are the primary responses at the top.
Number three, I think, Kyle, no.
So we have actually overwhelmingly, sorry, overwhelmingly, I see 41% saying online. And 26%, but, but there is a little bit of an issue with this survey because we, we didn't quite get it thoroughly scrubbed and I can understand some confusion. I mean, I'm looking at the responses and some people treated it as if we were asking about safety. And other people treated it as if we were asking specifically about preferences around online versus in-person. And I can understand that confusion and we certainly tried with this survey. And when I thought about it, when we were writing this up, I could still see particularly questions three and seven, or sorry, three and five. It was clear to me why we kept those, but now that I'm looking at people's responses, I think they led to some people answering in terms of the safety question or the COVID question rather than kind of the accessibility question. You know, you guys know what I'm saying? Like, we're at an awkward time right now because we're not quite in the clear, right? So some people are still thinking pandemic and other people are thinking access. And so it makes it, I think it makes this a little muddy, reading this, but I'd be interested in what the rest of the board thinks about that.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer. Mike, go ahead.
So what I meant, when I said, I think hybrid is the Goldilocks is not that there's people who answered specifically hybrid only. The answer, it's the hybrid gives the people who want to be in person the opportunity to be in person. It gives people who want to be online the opportunity to be online. So in a way encompasses, I don't know how many people who answered, you know, I want the meetings to be in person meant I, I will only be happy if every single person is there and people who are not able to turn up physically cannot participate. My sense is it meant they wanted to be there and they wanted to be able to attend in person. Not they want to prevent anybody else from attending online. So in that sense, hybrid potentially covers all three of those. It puts us in the, I don't have the numbers in front of me if you scroll back up to number two. You know, potentially hybrid gives us the blue, the red and the orange. Except again, we'd, we'd have hybrid with more than just limited interaction. So if we, basically if we can satisfy people who want to, to be, to want to be able to attend in person and we can satisfy people who want to attend online, which a good hybrid solution with full interaction would do, then we satisfy all three of those groups. And some of the individual answers as well. So that clearly is where we, if we, in an ideal world, that's where we'd get to. I'm just not, I'm not entirely clear how we would do that in a efficient way. You know, if we had a room that was already set up with appropriate AV equipment and we could just sort of turn up when we need to and not require Carl to spend an hour setting up beforehand. Then, you know, I can, that, that would definitely work. So I'm not quite sure what you can do that's efficient and doesn't use up a lot of staff time and doesn't create more technical risk. But other people are trying to solve this now, so we don't necessarily have to do it, you know, from scratch ourselves. We can find best, best cases. There's also a, a question about the mechanics of how do we actually achieve this? Just in terms of our rules and procedures, but I'll leave that, I'll leave that discussion till after we've decided what we'd prefer to do.
Jennifer?
All right, and just to throw one more wrench in this, it also doesn't directly answer kind of what we want. And like my personal preference is definitely to stay online without a doubt. But I'm worried that if we move to a hybrid thing that I'm expected to show up in person and I, I get it, like it was elected, I knew what I was signing up for. But I'm just saying, big preference here for me at least to stay online. And that really makes a huge difference for me and the job I can do overall in attending other meetings. And I understand that we're just talking about GBOS here, but GBOS is also kind of a big force in town and just set the, set. I don't know what would be the term. It, it sets a model too. We set a model, right? I mean, we're one of the more important, I don't know, I don't know, what, how I say this. I, like, we are making a lot of decisions for the town and a lot of things then get siphoned through us. So I just want to be careful as we make this that we're not just considering that we consider future GBOS members and current. I also wonder, and I just want to throw this one out too, whether or not we need to make this decision for any particular length of time. I think that there's going to be a big learning curve in this. And when I was thinking about this this week, for example, like somebody else mentioned the time thing, the time thing is crazy, right? That last meeting going for four hours and now having to do more? That's pretty crazy and that doesn't support a community involvement in a way if we're four hours into something. And, and I want to just, while I'm at it, take responsibility for some of that. I probably should have called something to question instead of calling for more discussion last meeting. But that being said, it was also two hours before we got to any of the actual business. I had us marked at 8:45 before we actually tackled it. So I think this is, I, maybe that's more than we need to talk about right now. Maybe right now we need to just talk about what are we doing for the next, I don't know, X amount of months. And then, as Mike said, I know we have to deal with the, how we can do what we decide on, but I just wanted to throw out there that I think there's more facets to this than just what we were able to include on the survey.
Right. Thank you, Jennifer, too, for, it's a good time to speak about it since we're all here. And then Kyle, I had a follow-up to, I didn't pay attention to the last assembly meeting, but have they changed anything except perhaps the amount of people that are allowed back inside?
There's no restrictions at this point in time. The mask was the last one and I, they, they lifted that. They left, they left it with a few departments, which is library and and public transit, but I think that was being lifted this week. So I don't think there's many requirements left. You know, they're still running the, under emergency order, which still operates Emergency Operations Center. But for the most part, the restrictions are pretty much gone.
Okay. And then their model, we would call it hybrid because it's on YouTube and online. Well, that is YouTube.
Well, they've been, they've been hybrid for a long time, you know, they're just using YouTube now as their video platform, but they used to, you know, they have their own channel on Channel Nine on cable. And they used to do all their meetings that way. You couldn't interact, but you could watch and listen. And, and so it, it would just be maybe it's just a change for us. I mean, we've been hybrid for a long time too, in the sense that we broadcast all our GBOS meetings over the radio, but we would be adding in video. Which I think that would be the biggest challenge for us is video is to, and then if we allow people to interact, that would be, or even vote for our subcommittees. That would probably be just a challenge. We would probably have to set up a Teams, there's one Teams in the room that represents the room and then anybody can call in online. But getting the video on so that people on the Teams is seeing what's going on in the room. You know, we'd probably require somebody to stand at a camera and turn to the speakers and try to capture it. Or, you know, and then putting displays up on the Teams that are being shown in the room. We would just have to make sure all those are linked together.
Right. And I was wondering if radio was the previous element, if more people would actually tune into the radio if that was the only other option. But video is a whole other element that we are so familiar with, with everything and technology. So they would probably get, feel that connection more when there's the visual aspect. Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had this thought, actually Whittier Community Council, I think is what it is, or their city council. They have a YouTube channel and they actually have mounted cameras that face the audience and then face the, and no one mans them, no one changes the direction. I think it might be two cameras that are linked to their YouTube channel. And that might be something to explore, talking with how they do that. But otherwise, my real comment was, looking at the poll, it looks like when we were discussing it, we said hybrid is not an option that we could actually do. That's like what, what, two weeks ago when this came out, this poll came out. So we said, okay, why hybrid even a choice? And the, what I remember is that if someone chose hybrid, that would automatically go to we're online or via Teams or similar. So looking at that, we're at 67% of respondents are wanting to be online. And then if you look at fall 2021, when 70% is vaccinated and never, I mean, that's the majority of respondents. Is there a way that we can extend the virtual meetings to the fall? And then revisit, I guess is my question.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So Whittier City Council is a good example of where I think hybrid would be. You could actually have hybrid with interaction, but they have a dedicate, they have a council chamber which is set up and wired up and was designed for that purpose. So, and we don't have that. We have a community room that's shared by lots of different groups and lots of different resources. So we don't have something which is set up and configured that way the whole time. But yeah, that, that's kind of the model we'd probably have to move to if we were going to have an effective hybrid with interaction. The assembly used to have kind of a, you know, the video feed, but you could only watch. Then they moved to a situation where there's some interaction and they have more formal public hearings and during a public hearing, you can be on the phone and interact by phone. So either you register beforehand and you get explicitly called and you can make your three-minute public statement. Or for some people, mostly administration, there's a sort of, there's a phone conference sort of set up during the whole meeting. And people can participate from that. So that's something we could potentially do. So that's something we could potentially do, have a, have a sort of phone line that people can interact in with. It would be a second or two ahead of the video feed, which would make it kind of weird. But that's one possibility. So we could move to something closer to a sort of semi-interactive system. But you'd still have to have a way of, you know, it, it's not clear how people can indicate they want to speak. There'd have to be a way of calling on people. And that works in the assembly meetings because, you know, if there's a particular topic, you may call on someone in the planning department or some, someone in solid waste or whatever the topic is. I'm not sure quite how we would do that in, in a good meeting. So I'm kind of arguing against, I'm arguing both for and against the same idea, yeah. There was something else I was going to say as well, I can't remember what that was. It was about the, the issue of hybrid meetings. I'll come back to it.
Okay. And I know that we are running short on time last meeting. So it was perhaps going to be a decision that is a for now decision and it probably will be either way. But it's an evolving process. So our next decision tonight would be to set a date for revisiting it again to follow through with the process and notifying the public, et cetera. Jennifer, go ahead.
So Brianna, are you saying then that we would, we would go with the current online? And then revisit, like that, that's kind of, that, that would be the plan?
Well, I feel like two meetings ago, we were just up against a deadline for a date and needed the twenty-eight days. So we said, let's make this decision. But then indeed, we couldn't do that because the emergency order was no longer in effect. So I guess I'm a little confused myself, but I know we have, we had important things to talk about every agenda. But this one, it needs to be the right timing to notify the public. So it might not be a decision that sticks for months. Or like managers suggested, maybe in the fall, because that highlighted the most populous percentage that responded to that question. Mike?
Sorry, can I add one other question that's kind of related, I think?
Yes.
Which is that I'm a little unclear on, it sounds like we might need some kind of budget or both human or financial resource allocation if we were aiming at moving to hybrid. Like I don't, I don't see how that could be done with what we currently have available. If I'm understanding what Mike is saying correctly, is, is that right?
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, roughly. I think at the minimum we'd need, so, yeah, I want, the, the thing I wanted to talk about last, and this is a good segue, is the mechanics of how we do this, or rather the procedural side of how we do it. But stepping back to what Jennifer just said, I think the, I think the minimum, if we were going to do a teams-like experience and have that in a hybrid model, it would have to be pretty much as Kyle said, so you'd have to have probably a computer per GBOs member on for staff. We'd have to be microphones somehow, there would have to be at least one camera pointing to the audience. They were probably, people would have to come up and speak to a microphone. Because one of the problems is there would not be a way of people just talking from their seat in the audience would not be picked up by the people online. So there would need to be a sort of, you know, a microphone which everyone comes up and uses. And that would change the dynamics a little bit, but probably not in a bad way. But so the minimum mean, I mean, the moment when we use microphones in GBOs meetings, they're borrowed from the, from the radio. So we'd need at least our own sort of setup. And we have some, I just don't know how, I don't know how much we, how, how far off we are from what we would need. Maybe we just need a, you know, a set of laptops and maybe we could use our own or something, I don't know. I don't know what the options might be, but it probably would require some sort of budget. And then that was about the actual mechanics of how, of what we would do in terms of the technology. Then there's also the procedural side. So just to clarify where we are, again, the, the, there is an emergency order in place still. All the things it restricted have mostly gone away, but the emergency order itself is still there. So from our rules and procedures, while an emergency order is in place, we can hold online meetings. But that emergency order goes away, I think on the twelfth of June. And while we did introduce our chain, a change in rules early enough to give us twenty-eight days notice. Our current procedures also state that not only do you have to give twenty-eight days, it can only be voted on in a regular meeting. And we don't have both twenty-eight, we didn't have both twenty-eight days and a regular meeting, which would occur before the twelfth of June. So at the moment, if we follow our, if we follow our rules and procedures, there is no way of continuing online meetings. We would have to, you know, the twelfth will come along, we will not have had time to change our rules by the twelfth. And on the twelfth, the emergency order disappears, therefore we stop the, the procedure which allowed us to have online meetings. Therefore, we move back to in-person only. At least for GBOs. It doesn't preclude other people from calling in or doing something else, but for GBOs members ourselves, we would have to be in person to vote.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mike. Correcting what I said. Okay, and the next regular meeting is June twenty-first.
Yeah, so we're too late.
Okay. I think there are public members attending tonight. So if anyone else would like to comment, please raise your hand. And I know some of the guests have spoken at other meetings and I'm sure they filled out the survey. So, Crystal, go ahead.
I generally definitely support an online format because it makes it easier to participate. But I, I did have one experience on an HLB meeting where myself and another member of the public had our hand lowered. And that was, you know, not, it, it, it left us with questions, you know? And so there are disadvantages to an online meeting, but generally definitely positive and as far as the GBOs meetings go. Also, I know that the, the, the community room has a budget, I think of like seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand. And I think some of that money should be taken to upgrade the AV. I know, you know, I've given presentations before where, you know, the, the electronics there are dated or difficult to use. Or so I think what you can find on Amazon now is considerably cheap. And hooking up some cameras that are fixed to the walls, I think, could be possible with some of that money as a, as an improvement to that room.
Thank you. Kaylee, your hand is up.
Actually, I was going to sort of ask a similar question. Could some of the budget be, it's, it's a discussion we had pre-COVID about updating the AV system there anyway in that room. And I don't know what that we, that could be made to include or what the possibilities were there, but that's my question. I'm definitely someone that voted to have all meetings online because it makes it easier to participate. So I was, I sort of, guess I'm mirroring Jen, Jennifer's comment about the, you know, that, that question, the poll questions weren't quite indicating how much bases you were answering. So for me, I was based, my answers on convenience primarily. But anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle or, well, Mike or Kyle, would you like to respond first about the AV system?
We did pursue the AV system and, and we worked with our contractor, chariot group, which does a lot of the AV professional systems in town. We had extremely difficult time with them and then they just dropped off the planet. They stopped actually talking to us. And so we can pursue that again. I, I agree that at this point in time, what we're trying to do is we're trying to, we have a wired-in system now, which still uses like VGA connections and things like that. And we would, and, you know, we use adapters that go to HDMI now and things along those lines. And the Macs have the hardest time hooking up to the system. And we could probably transition out of that and, and, and look at other resources to, hopefully we can find another contractor or get response from this contractor to assist us. But they just dropped us like a hot potato and stopped returning our phone calls when we kept asking for them to give us a proposal. So we can go and try to figure it out.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd suggest we could probably go direct to a teams-like solution and use the Wi-Fi capability in the building. That would probably be even more efficient than trying to set up the AV system itself. But we would need an, an input from at least one microphone from the audience. So we probably need, you know, we'd probably need one computer for, I'm going down the techy path, I'm sorry. We'd probably need at least one, one computer for staff, one each for offices or board members for GBOs offices for other meetings. And then one computer to run the kind of audience side. And then have that, have the overall feed going into the loudspeakers in the room.
The hardest part, I think, would be is we just have to control the volumes. So that, you know, when you, you get two people in a room that attend a teams meeting and then all of a sudden the back feed is going across because when they're both unmuted, we would need to figure that, that's, I think that the biggest challenge is the audio aspect, you know? And I know just with, when the radio station comes to go, is set up for those meetings, all the, the setup it takes, you know, I helped Lewis for like an hour and a half before each meeting and then it takes us forty-five minutes afterwards to wrap it up. Just so that the feedback is not, you know, just the technology has to be right to make it work so that people aren't frustrated by the noise and sound.
Yeah, headsets are probably the way to go, at least a headset microphone. If any close talking doesn't pick up area. There's still this question about the, about the procedural mechanics. So one thing, as I said, if we follow strictly our process, we can't make any changes. But because we're kind of in an emergency situation still, we could potentially, the one mechanism we have if we want to continue online meetings is to drop the, still have the notice requirement, but drop the requirement that we have to vote in a regular meeting and make that a special meeting. And that would give us at least a mechanism for continuing online for a bit longer if we wished. And the rules we current, the rules we introduced and the language we put in place would allow us to continue regular meetings. So if we decide that under the circumstances, we can drop the strict requirement. Well, even in the procedure, it's not that strict, it just mentions regular meeting. It doesn't say regular meeting only or anything like that. But if we advertise the special meeting appropriately, we could probably make the case that we're, we're still following the spirit of our procedures and, and vote in a special meeting on what would be June the eleventh or June the twelfth to extend online for a bit longer. And then that would allow our subcommittees to do it as well, or the committees to do it as well, if they chose.
Okay, thank you. Crystal, is your hand up again or same?
Sorry about that.
Okay. I think she's trying to take it down.
I got it.
Okay. Any other comments? Jennifer, did you have anything else? Okay.
Actually, it was, it was kind of what, I, it was more what Mike was saying. I wanted to be, I want to make sure that we're looking at all possibilities. I understand, like you're reading of how things are going, but I feel a little stymied by the difference between what the poll says, the public law, and what rules that were written way before without any idea about the kind of year that we've ended up living. Not to mention these other possibilities. So if, I feel like, I, I feel like the public's made it really clear what they want. And to say, well, I'm sorry, but our rules say X, it's, it's true and I want to abide by that. I want to be as careful as we can, but I don't want to give those rules credit they're not necessarily due, if you know what I mean. The, you know, the public has voted on this pretty substantially. And so I, I like the idea of trying to figure out a way to move forward where we make it possible to make this happen, even if our rules don't want us to.
Right, great points. And also I was thinking that as, as meetings evolve and people get used to doing everything and so many things in their daily lives on, online, that we would have to instill, instigate, whatever, implement new rules, like a discussion topic can only be this amount of time based on however many items are on the agenda or how many minutes have gone by and then a vote like we experienced the other night. And that's why meetings now need a vote to go past ten and then they do not go past eleven because it's happened. But, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, the, I agree with what Jennifer said. The, the thing I was saying about the rules is there's, we're stuck between two slightly, two things which force us into a particular position if we follow them absolutely to the latter. But I think the spirit of them is such that there's a mechanism whereby we can, we maintain the public notice. We make everyone aware of what we're doing, but we do the vote to change our up, change our rules and procedures during a special meeting. So that would be a mechanism whereby we, we're not stuck with the, the sort of, you know, the narrowest interpretation of our rules. And we're still doing something which are in the spirit of the rules. And it would allow us to continue online meetings for a little bit longer. The other thing I wanted to mention before I forget is although we're mostly talking about convenience and to a lesser extent, safety, there's, there is a, there are a group of people who potentially would be prevented from turning up to online meetings, if, sorry, turning up to in-person meetings if that's the path we went. And that is there are, there are a group of people who either, there are people in our community who've, for example, gone through recent treatment that result in a suppressed immune system. And if they had a vaccine, it's not going to be as effective. Or in many cases, they won't be using a vaccine. And there are, of course, people who live with individuals, maybe the under-twelves or other individuals who are, who cannot have a, who currently aren't authorized to use a vaccine. So there are plenty of people who, because we're not, we don't really have a way of forcing the issue of disco, of forcing people to mask who are not vaccinated. If we just follow the scientific guidelines and we said, you have to have, we only go back to in-person meetings, there are a group of people who would be taking quite high risks to turn up and be in in-person meetings. So I think we have to take, you know, although things are quote back to normal, they're not. There's still, there are still significant sections of society who, not by choice, are either prevented from having vaccines or cannot, cannot use vaccines or vaccines are less effective. And they are in a vulnerable position and if they follow the, you know, if they, if they do things appropriately, they shouldn't be there in person. So I think there is a risk in jumping to in-person meetings only immediately. And for that reason, that's why I would justify a slight tweak in our rules to allow more online meetings for a bit longer.
Great, thank you, Mike. Amanda, your hand was up.
Thank you. I agree, Brianna, that we should definitely consider limiting public comment on discussion of topics. So we can prevent, yeah, really long meetings, hopefully. But my main comment was that I think I would prefer to not have to vote every month to extend the virtual. If we were to somehow be able to say it's extended till the fall, then we would give ourselves a buffer to figure out how the AV works and get the hybrid system worked out maybe. And, or maybe we'll get to that seventy percent. And that way we can, you know, focus on agenda items and not always discussing whether or not to come out of virtual is my suggestion.
I agree. Thank you, Amanda.
Can I just comment on that? We don't have that option now. We could do after we, if we choose to pass the thirty-five day extension, then once we've done that, we could then make it longer. But we'd have to, we'd have to at least do that first because that's the only, the only option we have at the moment.
Okay, Jennifer? You're muted though.
Good grief, you would think I would have it by now. So I was just going to ask to Mike's point if we could, if we're ready for a motion to pursue that route.
I think we've had lots of discussions so far and we don't want to stymie this meeting any further, so go for it.
Actually, I feel like, Mike, you've got this a little better than I do. Would, would you be willing to state that and then I'll second it?
Okay, so I move that under our current rules and procedures, Article thirteen, Section A, to change our rules, we to change our rules, we, we have to provide 28 days of notice prior to a regular meeting. And I would propose a motion that we temporarily suspend that, the detail of that and provide 28 days notice before a special meeting. And then that gives us the option of holding a special meeting on, I think, the 11th or 12th of June. When we can vote to accept our change, our proposed change in rules and allow 35 day incremental online meetings. The way it's written in the, in the, in the rules and procedures, it's kind of more of a suggestion than a, than a declarative rule. Regular meeting is not in capitals and there's a few other things that suggest it's not a hard and fast, this shall never be violated, it's more of a guideline.
Okay, do I need to second that before I can ask questions about it?
Technically, we're supposed to second it before we can discuss it, yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
Second.
Kyle, could you bring up the rules and procedures?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been seconded, so now we can have discussion while Kyle brings it up.
Okay, so Mike, I liked the first part of that, but it sounds like we're still doing this thing that Amanda mentioned where we're having to keep talking about.
Yes.
So is, is, I mean, is that really a requirement or once we have a special meeting, can we say in our special meeting, here's what we're voting for and one of the things we're going to vote for is that we're just extending this until, I don't know, September or something. So we don't have to keep doing this.
So it's, it's all about how much, how much we want to follow. We have, we have these rules and procedures and I, although I, it sounds like I like slavishly following them, I don't. But I like to at least understand them because other people will require that we slavishly follow them. So I like to understand at least when we're, at least page 15, very top of page 15, Kyle. So I like to at least understand what we're doing and when there's, you know, where we are absolutely within our, you know, within the sort of, the, you know, the, the fairway, if you like, and when we're kind of on the edge of the fairway. So this is the, this is the section, so at the moment, we've already proposed a change in rule and the proposal we made was that, and we've published this and we've noticed it. And what we proposed is that we can vote to extend online meetings by 35 days at any regular, at our regular meetings. So but because of the timing, we can't actually make, according to section, Article 13 down here, it basically suggests that we should make changes to rules in a regular meeting. We're all, we've already given 28 days notice. We've been discussing this issue of online meetings for multiple, you know, multiple months. So I don't think it's against the spirit of the rules to make this action because we're in an emergency situation and because if we go straight back to in-person meetings, there are a number, there are many people in the community who will be prevented from turning up and therefore prevented from participating. Because our general principle is we want to allow people to participate. I think that overrides the sort of, you know, this regular meeting statement in the middle of this rule. So I think as a, as a principle, we could say, which is what the motion is, that we will allow in this particular case, because it's an emergency, us to pass a change of rules in a special meeting rather than a regular meeting. So that's the only thing that's, that's the thing that's right in front of us now. Because we've owned, because of this 28 days notice, which I think is fair to follow, what we've noticed is this, is the change that does give us only 35 days in, at a time. But once we've implemented that, we can still change, we still have enough time to propose another change of rules to make it September or whatever. So we could do that and notice it in time for our July meeting. So in the June meeting, we would extend it. We'd have a special meeting to change to implement this rule. We would then extend it on the June meeting by 35 days and that we would also introduce the, potentially we would introduce something to say, we actually want to extend it to September. We noticed that for a month and in the July meeting, we extended to September. So that would be a way we could go through this process. What's in front of us now is the suggestion that we should pass a kind of an emergency motion to suspend the, the regular meeting part of Article 13, Section A and allow us to pass this particular, or to change the rules in a special meeting because of extenuating circumstances.
Thanks, Mike. Understood.
Thank you, Mike, for thoroughly explaining that.
Stammering with faint praise there. I can go on for another hour if you want.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Kyle, do you have the motion and ready to do roll call?
Yes. Could you just state the motion one more time for the record and then we'll do roll call?
Okay, I'm, this is probably going to be slightly different from the last time I stated it, but this is the principle. The motion is to suspend Article 13, Section A so that we can pass a rule change, a properly noticed rule change in a special meeting rather than a regular meeting for the, because it's a extenuating circumstances of if we wait the extra week for a regular meeting, we potentially prohibit people from turning up in in-person meetings due to safety considerations.
Okay. If you're ready, I'll do roll call.
Ready.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Hey, great. Thank you, everyone.
And from staff perspective, we take that meeting stay online for the time being.
Okay.
Yeah, we do need to schedule a special meeting before the emergency order expires.
Okay, we'll try to get one scheduled next week and maybe we'll do special meeting and combine the two together. So with the nonprofit.
Nonprofit grant, recreation grant. That'd be great.
We'll have to, it has to be at least 28 days after the notice went out from the last meeting. Or from the, the notice that went out to show our change of rules. So I think we have like a two-day window.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're ready for number six. Request for GBOS resolution of support to MOA Traffic Engineer for no parking signs and permanent posts for the cul-de-sac at the end of Timberline Road slash Virgin Creek Falls Trailhead.
So I'll speak to that. We would like to have no parking signs and placed at the end of, as we said, the end of Timberline Road to deal with the, no, with the parking issues up there. Right now we have temporary ones, but we'd like to have permit ones put in and we would like GBOS to pass a resolution of support for that. I'm just sorry, I'm looking real quick here. Just see, I think we did draft a letter. Sorry, we jumped all over the other night. Here we go. So yeah, here's a resolution for it. So yep, it would address that issue up there and help deal with our temporary signs that seem, seem to keep walking away or get tossed in the woods. So.
Okay, thanks, Kyle. I don't see it. Am I, yes, I do. Okay. So any comments from the board about this resolution? And I could read it or Mike could read it into record. I have it in front of me. Oh, Jennifer could read it. Jennifer? And Crystal has her hand up. So Jennifer, go ahead first.
That wasn't about reading it, sorry, bug. Is, is this a point at which I can ask, I just, I'm, I'm clear that there's a big problem at the end of Timberline. I get that. I don't understand from this resolution where, where we're thinking people are going to park instead or are we hoping that they stay home and don't come to the trailhead?
Yeah, the, the signs would need to be placed at the end of the cul-de-sac, so the turnaround area and particularly the driveways of the residence there. The Virgin Creek Lodge is back there and more than often they've had people parked right in front of their driveway and they couldn't get out of their property. So it would just be, currently we have the no parking signs placed at the very top of the cul-de-sac, so it allows for people to turn around and then people can still park on the shoulders before you get up to the, basically the, the start of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I, I didn't understand that. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Kyle, for clarity, would, do you have a map or anything you could show us?
Yeah, let me pull this up. My imagery might be bad just because of the trees here. Let me just see.
Looks good. For the plating, here's the trees.
So this is, you know, here's the sense of the road. We have a driveway right here in this location that comes down. The end of the road is right here. It's pretty close to visual. So the no parking signs would just be right up in here. Right up in this area. And that allows for a fire truck to hammerhead turn around as well as protecting all this space up here. And then people typically, when those signs are up, they're parking down this area, they're parking up this area on both sides. You know, there's a, there's a pseudo driveway here that goes back over those old military trusses. A lot of people are parking in that area. So they're parking up and down the street here. We're just trying to prevent them from parking at the very top of the cul-de-sac.
So it'd be the, the whole way around that circle?
Correct. It would probably be much.
Both sides of the driveway. Okay.
Because here's the house. We want, don't want them parking in front of the house. Here's a new residence going on this lot right here. And, and then we have to change the trailhead and the trailhead is going to drop out now at the top of the, of the cul-de-sac.
That was my other question about when, when these would be installed versus the change in the trailhead.
Yeah, they would probably, the way traffic's going right now and the way it's staffed, it would probably be well after we get done with the trailhead. So we're hoping they get it before winter.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board or from the public? Or comments? All right. Thank you for that, Kyle. Okay, so since Jennifer's name is on this, is it fine for her to read it into the record or does it matter?
That's how we generally do it, but
Okay.
There is a veto.
Jennifer, do you have it in front of you?
Yeah, sure, I can do it. That's no problem.
Okay, when you're ready.
Okay, so this is for the Girdwood Board of Supervisors Resolution of Support for Installation of Permanent No Parking Signs and Signposts at Virgin Creek Falls Trailhead Timberline Road. Whereas Girdwood is a pedestrian-friendly community with trailheads in neighborhood locations and whereas Virgin Creek Falls Trail has become very popular with people during a short and easy hike to a picturesque location and whereas the volume of parking needed is not possible directly at the trailhead for Virgin Creek Falls, causing neighbors to install informal no parking signs to protect their driveway and road access. Therefore, in order to provide for the needs of the neighbors and provide formal communication with trail users seeking vehicle parking, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors requests that no parking signage on permanent posts are placed at the top of Timberline Drive at the Virgin Creek Falls Trailhead. Put it up.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Further discussion? Okay, Kyle, can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Girdwood Lions Club and Girdwood Parks and Recreation request for the Butte Company to begin permitting and plans for pavilion and amenities for Lions Club Park.
Yeah, so what we would like to do is we're going to give a proposal from TBC, the Butte Company. They're our term design and, and project management team for the municipality. We're going to get a proposal from them and we'll bring it before GBOS, who wanted to get this here as new business. But what we're trying to prepare for is the next land and water conservation grant that's going to come out from the federal government. And the pavilion would be a prime suspect for, for that grant, prime candidate. And we would like to have everything set so that we have a shovel-ready project and we can just present it to, for the grant so that we can be high, score high. So we know exactly what the costs are, what it's going to look like and what we're going to do. Lions Club's been seeking for a long time to build a facility there with better ADA access and, and coverage so they can be used during all types of weather. And we were pushing away at that, but the grant, these grants had been tied up in the federal government for years and the state of Alaska actually received the money, but never actively pursued the grants and we're hearing that they're going to do it this fall. So, so this is new business, so we'll, we'll bring it back to you and we have that proposal and we can discuss it more at that time when we have more information in front of us.
Excellent. Mike, your hand up.
So to clarify here, the, the request is that GBOS or the service area taxpayers pay for the design work. And then Lions Club would apply for the grant or we would apply for the grant with Lions Club. How would that work?
We would apply for the grant with Lions Club and we would work with Lions Club to hopefully find the matching on it. These grants are usually 90-10 and so 90% comes from the grant, 10% matching. And so we would work with Lions Club to help us come up with that match, either in materials or labor or volunteer time somehow to match what we need for the grant.
Okay, but we would, the service area would be paying for all of the design work upfront?
Correct. Yep, it would be a park entity in the end and, yep.
Okay.
Paying for it upfront.
And we don't have any sense of what that will be. Well, it'll be 49,950, won't it? I thought it, the term contract is 50,000 and that's, everything is just a touch under.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll see what it is.
Hey, thank you. Kaylee?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure how it would work, Kyle, but because the, the nature of that change, this project is changing a bit and it'll be a 10% match potentially on a grant that's coming to the community. Is that something that we could broaden beyond, like for example, if Rotary wanted to go in with funding on that 10% or is this strictly a something that's been agreed upon ahead of time with Lions before applying? I'm just curious because it's a very exciting project.
Um, sorry, I'm a bit confused. Maybe say that again as to what the question was.
I just mean, is there an opportunity for another service club to potentially help with that 10% match funding?
Oh, I'm sure there is, you know, if somebody, however the 10% comes up, this has been a Lions Club initiative for, for at least six years. And so I presented to them long ago about it and we just have tabled it, but we realized just like the, when we redid the, the tennis courts and things like that, we had a, a plan together, which then helped us to try to seek funding when we were going for that. So yeah, no, I think if two service organizations want to come together, if many people want to come together and help find that 10% match, however it happens, it just needs to be there when, when it comes time to, to submit the grant.
Yeah, that's perfect. I'm just wondering if that would make it, you know, expedite it in any way. But I, I will be in touch with them with you as well.
Yeah, I don't think it would expedite the process when we deal with the state, but it'd make it any stronger that showing those two organizations coming together on it.
Right, okay, perfect. That's kind of my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. Right. Oh, we look forward to seeing that in our business, Kyle.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, Kaylee, hand up. It's down probably. And must you have something else, Kaylee? Nope. All right. Next item, Girdo Trails Committee Request for GBOS Consideration of the Flow Chart for New Trails Regarding Relationship Between Girdo Trails Committee and Land Use Committee as Advisory Committees to GBOS. Girdwood Trails Committee and Land Use Committee as Advisory Committees to GBOS. Who would like to this?
I could, I could speak to it and I'm sure Mike has a lot of input on this too, as he was directly involved with this conversation. But basically, what this is, is that GTC has asked GBOS for their consideration and, and input on how the process works to approve things from GTC and specifically focus with new trails. GTC has developed a flow chart system which has the, the steps you need to go through to get a new trail approved for the community. And it, it's a very detailed flow chart. And I should do is try to pull it up here, but basically what is kind of got people hung up right now is, is it, does GBOS want a new trail that has been approved by GTC to go to LUC and have it approved there as well? The debate is that it could go to, it would still go to LUC for, for these presentation and advisement on it. But it wouldn't require a vote there. And then there's another camp that feels it does need to go to LUC and have another two-meeting round and vote before coming up. And I think the disagreement is that people feel that GTC is a direct advisor to GBOS on issues related to trails. That's their, their primary focus is trails is all they talk about and it's what they review. And so as an advisory committee, just like LUC is an advisory committee to GBOS, some feel that the work is done at that level and it should come directly to GBOS for, for approval. Others feel it should get approved at GTC, then go to LUC and then to GBOS. So the, I think the GTC is looking for advisement on how that should happen and what GBOS expects for review.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, Kyle explained it very well. The way I summarize it is, well, there are actually two issues. The, the substantive issue here is that we need to discuss is whether LUC has a veto on trails decisions or not, the way it was presented in the original flow chart. LUC had a veto. So trails could approve something. LUC could say, no, it wouldn't go any further. And that probably is not the way we want it to be. But in a, in a trails meeting, they proposed a solution to that and a change to the model, which probably isn't the right answer either. So we need to talk through it and work out what the right solution should be. And then send that back down. The, the second point is there was a a very heated argument about whether, about the procedure that was followed to make that change. But we don't need to get into that. That was, that was probably about the majority of the, of the issue when it first came up, not what the solution should be, but how we got to that point. But I think for us, the question is, you know, whether, what the relationship is between those two bodies and us and how we want things to proceed. And I think the, the way it was originally proposed is definitely not correct, but it wasn't clear that their suggestion was correct either.
Okay.
So we're in a space where we know there's a problem we haven't got to fix yet.
Thank you. Jennifer, your hand is up.
Sorry, Mike, could you just clarify a little bit about why there's a problem? Because it seems to me like trails, while they are making recommendations based on trails, it's not necessarily within their purview to see the larger picture. And I understood land use to potentially be looking at larger picture. And so you're moving up to. But our, I guess I'm not clear on why there's a problem exactly. So maybe you could clarify that.
Yeah, sure. It would be helpful if Kyle, you were able to find the original diagram.
Sure.
So the, the question was whether LUC has a, the way it was, the way the flow chart was presented, LUC had a clear veto. It wouldn't get to GBOS unless LUC agreed to it going to GBOS. And that doesn't seem to be the right approach. You know, one can argue that they're both parallel and we need the opinion, both need to make, weigh in on it. Or we could argue that you, there is also some people who've argued that trails themselves, that they have a special responsibility for trails and they can make a sole decision and send it on to GBOS. But I think to me, it's pretty clear that having trails be purely subsidiary of LUC and if LUC say, no, it stops, is not what I think we would want. So there was a mistake in the way the flow chart was presented. And I think because there was a proposal of how to fix it came up in trails, it was kind of voted through. And I think the problem was that a, a number of people felt it wasn't properly considered when trails made the suggestion because trails would effectively say, were effectively saying, this is how we think the whole structure should work. And the intention to refer it to GBOS was that that's probably the role of GBOS to decide how the whole structure works. So the issue was in the lower, I think it's, I can't quite see the numbers, between step 11 and 12. I think as it's structured here. Yeah, as it's structured here, 11, if GB, if LUC said, no, it doesn't go any further. And that I don't think is the right structure, but we should discuss what the right structure is. So this is the thing we, that trails believed was in error. And I agree, it was probably an error, but then trails proposed a solution and voted on it and the sense of the following meeting was that's not really trails' job to fix this issue. It's GBOS's job to propose the solution.
Correct. Okay, great. I understand.
Okay, Amanda?
Would it be possible for Girdwood Trails to send it to land use and land use can make an opinion on it for GBOS to consider?
No, definitely that would be an option. Or maybe they could both vote in parallel and both, you know, we have a procedure already that if, because we're also advisory to other municipal bodies for many things. So we have a procedure now where we can vote, land use can vote on something, we can vote on something. And if we have different conclusions and we, you know, we have a procedure for trying to resolve those differences. If we can't resolve those differences, then we basically send both recommendations up to the next body. So you could, we could propose something similar to that where both of them have an opinion. And if they differ, you know, we, we either, we add our own opinion to that and send it forwards if it needs to go forwards. If it's something we can decide on, we decide on by ourselves, maybe we'd make a decision based on that. But we, we basically have to just, you know, go through and think about this. And we're just introducing it now. We don't have to make any decision on how to do it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board or questions for now? Okay, I see Deborah, you have your hand up. Do you have a question or comment? You're still muted. Deborah? Okay, Deborah, you're still muted.
Okay, I'm in. I'm in. Sorry about that. Um. So. It's a little bit hard for me to say what I really want to say because I feel like I want to address what Mike just said. But I, what I want to say, I think, does address it. It's just not in order. I did miss the meeting at the Girdwood Trails Committee meeting two months ago. However, I was really surprised that the subject had come up at the last GTC meeting because it actually should, first of all, there's a couple of points. One is that it actually should never have been voted, excuse me, voted on at that April meeting because of the GTC protocol with agenda. And Mike, you touched on that and you said you don't really want to get into that and I get that. But I think that there's something really significant with that. And then the other, and I'm going to make a point to that in a moment. But the other thing was is that I feel like the meeting kind of got hijacked by like a G boss rep and in the May meeting, and it made the issues more confusing. And effectively, when trying to get a motion, it was very difficult. And those who were there to vote and understanding the issue was very difficult. However, this has been in the Girdwood Trails Committee operating procedures for a really long time. I do believe that this sets an extremely poor precedent for what can possibly happen in the future. And I'm talking about just the protocol of voting on it two months ago. And that's why it came back last month. And that's the heat, there's where the heat is, I think, what you said, Mike. And I do think that that matter should be looked at a little bit more closely. Getting to the specific. Again, as a trails committee member, I know this simple operating procedure has been in place for a long time. And mostly, though it doesn't make sense to change the flow chart because it's been this way for many years, it makes sense for the trail and the land use to work both as advisories and to go back and forth with each other. And that was discussed and consent was agreed upon. People that have generally different ideas and thoughts about how things should be proceeded. But on that particular, one doesn't really work with the other, just for that simple fact, like you don't put a trail in where the land use has an idea that something else is going in, vice versa. And I guess to go back to, just to finish up real quickly about that, the procedure of like how that it was even discussed was that it made such a bad precedent on the way that we have been operating. Where we put things on the agenda and then it gets just presented and, you know, similar to what G boss does. And then the next meeting, we vote on it. And the very next subject that came up is a perfect example of why this system, like, like all of a sudden, we're, it's just out the, it seems like the protocol is out the window for GTC. When the Long Lake Trail Committee came and presented at the first meeting and expecting a letter of endorsement from the GTC. And I believe what could have been a very simple and a win-win for that particular subject, even though they were like seeming that it was like crushing on time, because I'm all about making like amendments and like, you know, exceptions. However, it's, that's the precedent I'm talking about and this will never stop. And I think there could have been a suggestion from the representative, not only the GTC, but also like the board representative that as individuals that were there that night, write a letter in support or whatever of their own support rather than it coming from the GTC committee. And I was really disappointed how that whole thing went down. Hope I was clear. If anyone has like a little bit question for me, if I wasn't really clear on that.
Okay. And speaking to the items on the agenda, Mike, do you have a response you'd like?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to talk about the, the other procedural problems that cropped up. There were multiple procedural problems that came up. And I would say there was the, it sounded like Deborah has a concern about new business being promoted to old business and being acted upon upon this in the same meeting. And I agree, that can be, that can be misdone. That can be mishandled. I have some suggestions for that, but I actually don't need to talk about that right now. There's an even bigger issue though. And the bigger issue is that once a body makes, performs a vote on something, you should not be able to just casually throw that vote away and then do it again. That's the, that's a kind of, you know, a fundamental principle of, of committees, a fundamental principle of Robert's rules, et cetera. So once a body makes a vote, especially a democratic, one person, one, one vote body, once they make a vote, there should be a very, very high bar to throwing that away. And unfortunately, the situation we were in the May meeting was that a vote, a vote that passed in the April meeting was kind of casually just thrown aside. And that is a much, much bigger violation than whether you have things promoted and changing order within a, within a, within a single meeting. So there were like multiple procedural issues that were very problematic and very significant going on at the same time. And I think what actually ended up in the May meeting was quite fair. That, you know, the, it was clear that GTC wasn't going to be able to effectively handle this particular item. So it was punted to GBOS. So I'm kind of happy we're in this position now to at least discuss the substance of it.
Thank you, Mike. Kaylee, was your hand up? And I can?
I'm. It was, my point was just going to be about the, it, it doesn't matter. I was just going to point out the, the actual use of land use. The, the point of the land use meeting is the, you know, it brings more people to the, to the item, I suppose, or has an opportunity to speak and
Right.
And way, but anyway, yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you.
No, no, that's fine. That's it.
But not necessarily having to have a vote or?
Right. I mean, I, I, I think it's fair to have a vote because there is a process in place in order, you know, if, if those two things differ. But so, I mean, I, I'm, you know, if we're talking about my opinion, then I'm okay with that or I'm okay with not having a vote. But I think it should go back through land use or go through land use. Just for the community's sake, I guess.
Thank you. Mike?
Actually, I'd like Deborah to go first. I see she has her hand up.
Deborah, your hand.
I thought maybe actually a response to something she's going to say. So I'll let her speak first.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. So I, I think I'm agreeing with you, Kaylee, on that. And I think that most of the people that attended that meeting were also in agreeance with that. And my understanding also is because of why we've agreed as a, one of a, a member of the trails committee, when we originally went through this flow chart, which we didn't call it that, but that was our procedures. We understood the role of what the Girdwood Trails Committee as an advisory does and what the role of the Girdwood, of the land use as an advisory does. And my true understanding is, is that if we, because trails, it's just because trails comes the first Tuesday. Then a week later comes the land use. If the land use votes against what we had at the trails meeting had said that we were in favor of, it does not stop there. It actually still, because that's just an advisory and it does go to GBOS. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that is really what my total understanding is of procedure goes. And yeah.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I think I agree. The way I understood what Deborah said, I can agree completely. I think the problem is the flow chart doesn't show that. The flow chart shows something slightly different, which is that it just stops as soon as LUC says no. So it may just be the way I'm reading it visually, in which case if I'm misreading it, other people are probably misreading it as well. So we should just clarify. I think we, I think what Deborah said is right. That's what we probably, we have to vote on it, but I think that's probably where we're going to end up. But we should at least clarify the flow chart. So that's really clear. And it's not at the moment. I was going to speak since Deborah mentioned it again, I was going to speak to the, the issue of this, of changing order. And when we vote on things which are expedient. I don't think this in particular was, I, I don't know whether this was, this change was something which justified a move from new business to old business in the, in the April meeting. I, I don't know. But in, in general, we have this not quite written down policy of when something needs to be acted on quickly, we can, we can effectively skip the two-meeting requirement and move it straight from old business to, straight from new business to old business. Again, there is a, there are sort of well-established procedures for doing this under Robert's rules and it would generally require a two-thirds majority. So you know, maybe what we do in the future is think about whether we should write that down and have like a super majority vote in order to change things. So it's clear, you know, when something needs to be expedited, there's a clear process for doing that. But that's just, that's addressing this sort of procedural problem which caused this initial issue.
Deborah, your hand's up. Thank you, Mike.
So I, I know that, I, I understand we wanted to keep to the, what's on the agenda, although this was part of the reason why this, like Mike said, it got so mucky. And I just want to say, Mike, that I actually, I, I kind of disagree with you on that because again, I don't want to belate it and really detail it right now. I do like the idea of you looking at it again. The issue of going from procedure like introducing it on new business and then going back a month later to old business. Because it just comes down to like exactly what happened with the Long Lake Trail. They came in and they did a presentation. Now she happened to have done it pretty well where she had some point slides and this representative. And so it was clear, however, like a year and a half ago, maybe two, there was somebody that came to the trails meeting, put it on the, there was somebody that came to the trails meeting, put it on the, it was a new agenda, did not have a map, did not have a, um, I mean, just a simple map, just off the top of his he, this person's head, was just like, this is what we want to do. And we're like, wait a minute, no, that's not procedure. You have, and not faulting the person or shaming them, it's just like, this is the procedure. And I think it's super important to follow that because we're setting a very dangerous precedent that way. And so whatever you want to do with it, and I know this has got off a little bit of topic, Brianna, um, but that was one particular part about this um flow chart thing, and that's how it started. So I think that's why there was the mistake specifically on this flow chart. Now, I can't say, because I wasn't at that particular meeting, but however, if I was, I know I would have like at that time said, mm-mm. And I questioned some other people that were at that meeting. I said, how did that happen? Why did you, what did you vote? And people said they didn't vote for it, but somehow it, it went, it was a narrow. I just find that it's, it's a problem there.
Right, and uh
And it was a mistake, excuse me, and it was a mistake.
Confusing when they're on virtual and doing things around their house and maybe not in the same room to follow along. Uh, sorry, Deb, did you want to finish?
Well, just that, um, I think that's a, um, a, a valid point that you made there just now, Brianna. I just feel like that this specific issue is that it was a mistake. It went in, it should not have even gone in for a vote. We didn't even, even have to do that. And some, yeah, maybe people were not really paying attention, because it went in and like some people just were like, yep, yep. And you know what? That's not how we've how it's been for many years. It kind of flabbergasted me when I saw it happen um on the May meeting. I'm going to lower my hand and
Okay.
Continue then.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Deborah. Any other comments from the board? Okay, Kyle?
I think that's it. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Well, no other comments right now? Can go to next item. Right up before nine here. Public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Does anyone have a public comment? And I think, Deborah, you said you were going to put your hand down, and it's still up.
I, I did put it down and I rose it because I do have a public comment on something that's not on the agenda.
I'll start.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. Um, so this is pertaining to the GTP meeting that um was last month. Um. So I hope you can follow me on this, but um, and try to make myself clear here. Uh, last month, the same people that requested this, the subcommittee to address their new ideas, the com, subcommittee had said, two weeks prior to that, no, we'd, we no, it's too late. No new ideas. They, and I was pretty disappointed that this was even talked about a couple of weeks ago at the GPT meeting, because those same individuals decided to go over in detail at length the exact ideas that they were already, that were already discussed a month prior and which were only received at six PM the day before the Tuesday meeting. And I, unfortunately, I feel like that there was not any time for anything else to be discussed and that the public had um, to listen to this for forty-five minutes, where they're specifically going into, like I said, their details of their comments and what they wanted to have a new agenda on the map. And, um, there was, and it did cut into the public time. I think there, um, I know there was a ten to one vote on the subcommittee um, that did not want to adopt those new ideas, just as they had said the month prior. But it came back up again. Um. I think this group is, has some diverse members and there's a reason for that. And for the most part, it has worked out. Um, I just have attended quite a few of them and listened in. And bringing up for an example, like an issue of language that had been changed, that, that was in part of these new comments, language should be changed for open spaces, national spaces, primitive trails, does not need a reexamination, because these terms have been used and discussed. And a common ground has been made for many, many months on that, just that particular issue. There were many comments that were made on this new um, i-ideas, including adding in ex, a lot of different trails. I mean, it totally changed the map. And the map was gutted at, at the last hour, I felt. And the map was actually, prior to that, was ready to go to the public. They, the committee had made their final comments, and to have to change it now, just in my opinion, and I think Kyle would speak to it, because I remember he was the one who opened it up and he talked about why not to change it. Um, cost, of course, Kyle, like, was, that was one of his major, um, but a great point. And uh, I just feel like it doesn't make sense and it would be super confusing for the general public.
Great. Thank you, Deb.
Yeah, thanks, Brianna.
Are there any other public comments? Okay. That's pretty good. Let's see, written reports are in the packet. And I think, I don't have anything else to read here. We can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Hope you had sunshine today.